We could go out and do that. Right now, like I said, we have brackets in the sidewalk for those signs to be placed. I guess we could send another letter out to let them know that's what those brackets are for, but I think the people have a pretty good idea of what they're for. They're for signs to be installed. But if the council would like, we could do that.
I think that we did. I feel like in one of the packets when we had the last hearing, we did.
I'll take your word for it.
I think we can send out another letter just to let people know, and we can work together to make sure we get something out. The police chief and all of us.
Great idea.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes.
First thought?
As I was reading through the analysis part of this, I kind of saw just like a narrative of what is there, and then the last two paragraphs is, to me, feels like the analysis where it says there's several other neighborhoods in the city that have similar parking limitations and function without either concern rising to need of consideration. And it goes through what you guys considered. So first, I don't see all of the things that we kind of talked about considering, and then I had questions on, is there a detailed summary of what you guys considered and how it was ruled out? Was anyone consulted for these considerations other than people on city staff? And have you looked into other communities that have had similar issues? Because I know that was discussed. Were these just email meetings? Were they in person? I mean, I was hoping to see a lot more detail.
We did not meet or reach out to the staff of any other city. I've never heard of a city that's had this issue. No parking signs are erected here and there, and people follow them, or they get ticketed. What's it called? Sylvan Springs neighborhood has no parking on one side of the street. I've never heard that it's been an issue raised in that neighborhood. You know, the issue here is that in 2001, when the streets were built, the city didn't make the developer put up no parking signs. If the no parking signs had been there before the houses, then everybody would know that they couldn't park on the south side of the street. The issue here was that the city was lax back then. Due to changeover and staff, no one knew that the restriction was there until 2014, when we started getting complaints. And if the city had done it right the first time, there wouldn't be an issue. And again, none of the options that we looked at would solve the problem of not being able to park in front of your house. There's going to be somebody who has to either park across the street or further away.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Dan, did you guys survey every single house to know that that's the reason that they didn't like the parking situation? Did everyone say they didn't want to walk the extra 14 feet? Did you, I mean, where are you getting that detail from?
If you have to park across the street because you can't park on your side of the street, then that's the difference it's going to make. I mean, the street's only 28 feet wide, and the parking lanes are seven feet, you know, a car is eight feet wide. So to get, if you can't park on your side of the street, you've got to park on the other side of the street. There's room in front of every house for off-street parking, for on-street parking.
I just feel like it's very subjective. Ms. Mayor, I'd like to ask Keith a question. When were these meetings for this? What platform were they in? How long were they? And were there minutes taken?
We met, and discussed this several times during staff meetings. We met with an overhead projector with all of us present, where we looked at the GIS. We spoke probably a course of a couple hours over all of this, going through this. Dan drafted the proposal, and all of us looked at it and added comments after the fact. So this was something that staff did spend quite a bit of time on in terms of staff hours. And I think Lance, Dan, and I believe Richie were part of that conversation. You're shaking your head too as we did that. And we sat in our, we talked about it during our staff meeting on a couple occasions, but then sat in and looked at the GIS and talked about all of these issues that we included. Included the ones we looked at at the bottom that discussed other possibilities of the problem. We just listed those instead of going into a great amount of detail. I don't know if we ever, for just an internal staff meeting, ever take minutes for that.
There's nothing else we can do with this, then, apparently. It seems to be one of those problems where there is no, there just is no easy solution to it. And never will be. Okay. New business. Water treatment plant slow sand filter memorandum. Mr. Ludwig.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In your packets, I have submitted a memorandum for your reading pleasure. In the sake of time, time management, I'm asking the mayor if I could go directly to my slideshow. It has a lot of the same information as the memorandum that I supplied to you, so I would like to just go forward and present the slideshow, and then I'll answer any questions that any of you have after the fact. Okay, it's water treatment plant slow sand filter bed operations and maintenance presentation. The state and drinking water treatment plant is located at 200 North First Avenue. That's just south of Water Street. I'm not sure if any of you have been there. You can go down there, and our plant manager would be happy to give you, the council members, a tour, show you what they do on a daily basis. The sand filter, the treatment plant configuration, it consists of three one-half acre slow sand filter basins, a control room which monitors flow in, flow out, head loss, turbidity from the water coming into the plant, and pH in the ponds. We add 12.5% sodium chloride for disinfection. Basically, it's chlorine or bleach. We add soda ash also to minimize corrosion in the pipes here for the citizens in the city. We have a clear well that monitors the chlorine going out. It provides a contact time for the water, so we can, the chlorine can, we can reduce the chlorine before it goes out into the pipes for our citizens. This is the plant, an aerial of the plant. You can see we have bed one, bed two, bed three. You have the control room, the soda ash room, and the clear water tank. And that's Water Street up above. We're just maybe a block away from that. Slow sand filter, this is the configuration of a slow sand filter ponds. We have three of those, so we get our water from the North San Yum River. Through an intake from the San Yum Water Control District ditch, we receive our water, comes down into our pond. The water goes into each one of the three ponds and percolates down into, through the sand, and through the gravel, and at the bottom, we have pipes, perf pipes. Water will just perk down into that. The actual cleaning of the water, though, is done in an area called the Schmudzky Zone, and that is like the first top one and a half inch layer of sand in each one of those filter ponds. The remaining pond, the remaining sand in there basically takes particulates out of the water as it infiltrates through the sand, and it provides a structure really for the Schmudzky Zone. It's a biological treatment, and once it enters the pipe, it goes to the clear water tank, and we add chlorine to it, and soda ash prior to that, and then it leaves the clear water tank out into our system. We usually pump it up to Pine Street or out in the system. There's variety of ways to get rid of the water into the system. Filter beds one and two were reconstructed in 1993. Filter bed three was reconstructed in 2010. The slow sand filter beds use natural curling processes to clean the water. It's a tried and true process, very reliable. The North San Yum River is the source of the state in water which flows into the slow sand filter bed, and that's very important. Slow sand filters are great when you have a great source of water, which is what we have, and that's why we've won three great tasting water awards in the state in the last three years. It's because we have a great source, we have a great process to clean that water. After a period of time of the water infiltrating through the top of the sand, the Schmudzky Zone becomes less pervious, makes harder for water to drip through the sand into the pipes to clean. So when this occurs, our maintenance personnel go out and they drain the water from the pond or the filter bed. They skim off the top one inch, one and a half inches of sand, and they remove it from the filter bed altogether, and then they put more water back into the filter bed, let it sit for a period of two or three days, sometimes more. It really depends on how long it's been sitting prior to putting water into it. Each filter bed, bed one, two, and three, they're skimmed probably once every eight or nine months. So about once a year, you have, you're taking an inch or an inch and a half off the top of the sand. This is pond number three. We just cleaned this, I think, Thursday and Friday of last week. You can see we have a nice little skimming machine to the right, on the picture on the right, with a John Deere tractor pulling up basically a wagon. It conveyors the sand up, and we tow the sand out, and we put it, and we stockpile it in the water treatment plant area. So that's going to take off about an inch, inch and a half of sand from each one of these ponds when they clean it. In December, we had a, one of our, our crew was out cleaning filter bed number one. One of our members noticed some pea gravel dispersed around the top of the sand. He came to me and informed me of that. I had my engineers go down and perform a survey on filter beds one and two. Filter bed number one is in need of more sand immediately. We have approximately 12 inches of sand in that pond. Anything less than two feet, you're supposed to be putting sand into it. So we're about, we're about 12 inches low there. Filter bed number two, we need to have done in the next two years. And filter bed next, filter bed three, as you can see, we just had that cleaned on Friday. I went out and surveyed, and it is right at the limits of needing sand. It's about two feet of, two feet of sand in there. When I found out in December that we needed sand for filter bed number one, I put a contract out to get that sand. We have a real issue with sand in this area due to last year's algae problem in the river. The Oregon Health Authority at that time, over the last six months, stepped up and made new requirements for sand for public water supplies. They enacted new standards for which are very stringent. I can't buy sand anywhere in the state of Oregon. The nearest sand that I can get is across the Columbia River from Astoria. That is the only place approved to take sand, which is very expensive to truck it here. We're talking in the neighborhood of 4,000 to 5,000 tons of sand for one bed. The City of Salem is in the same predicament. I've been working with the City of Salem. They put out a contract out in November this last year for sand for this exact reason. They got Knife River, who's local, to bid on that job. They were actually the low bidder on that project. But they have to be approved by the National Sanitation Foundation in order to provide, become a vendor to provide sand to municipalities. There was a 12-week process. I was just notified last week that they've been approved, so that's a big feather in our cap. They'll be providing sand to us if they're the low, if the contractor is the low bidder decides to go with them. They'll be providing to us from right across the river. So I'm pretty confident that they will be the low bidder on this job and provide sand to us. So that's really nice, because it's just right across the river. They're also going to be providing sand to the City of Salem. The bid opening for this project is March 28th. The engineer's estimate for this job is 600 to 750,000. Again, that is a, I want to, I don't want to say best guess, it's an educated guess. Problem is, that number was based on sand delivery from a firm from Astoria area. That's a lot of trucking. So I'm hoping the numbers come in less than that, because if we can get Knife River to do it, there's not as much trucking, just right across the river. But for this purposes, I wanted to be conservative, and so I'm looking at 650 to 750,000 dollars. This is an unplanned expense. This was not planned for. It wasn't in our budget document. I was not aware of our low sand predicament. I was not aware of it until just before the holidays, and since then, we've been working very hard to try to figure out how we can get this done. The project funding alternatives for this will be discussed by Andy Parks. He's here tonight. He's the city's financial consultant, has been working with myself and Keith to determine how we can best come up with the funds to do this. And with that, I'll turn it over to Andy, and I'll answer, I'll be back later to answer any questions you guys have for me.
Andy, do you need the lights back on, or?
Well, it's nice to look at you guys in the dark. But thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. I think, let's see how you guys want to look at this, you know, as far as the spreadsheets. I'm going to go through this, not in detail, but, you know, at a high level and address any questions you might have. And if you want to turn the lights on, you know, certainly, that's really more for you to decide. I'm not going to be, you know, looking at the screen, okay? This first screen, or this first slide is showing you the capital improvements. And let me back up just a second and say, what, you know, to address this issue, what we ran is three different financial scenarios. And if you've got a copy of the memo I prepared for Keith and Lance, it covers, you know, those three scenarios. One is a no borrowing scenario and how to get these things built together with the rest of the capital improvement plan that's, you know, in your budget. Another, two scenarios involve borrowing. One, doing incremental rate increases consistent with the CPI or in this planning exercise, 2%. The other is to do the entire, all these projects, do them on the timeline that was suggested, and what types of incremental rate increases would be needed in borrowing to ultimately accomplish this. So it kind of provides you a range of potential alternatives, and certainly, adjustments to those could be modified to, you know, to meet your needs. So this is the capital improvement plan. The blue highlighted numbers are the new items. You'll notice the blue items on the far, far years are the items that go out past the five-year capital improvement plan, and it's just an allocation of an average amount of investment to get you to $600,000 per year in capital improvements. The $700,000 that are there, you know, is an average number of the 650 to 750 that Lance mentioned earlier. And then the yellow highlighted number is the clear water tank. That project was two years earlier in the CIP, and that was moved out a couple of years to accelerate the investment into the sand filter work. And that million-dollar clear water tank construction will be something that will be looked at more closely with your master plan update. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, Andy. I thought it.
This is the machine that's supposed to.
Oh, you went right to questions. I went down too fast. Excuse me.
The second slide is showing, with that updated CIP, the financial forecast, you know, showing a no borrowing scenario.
Where are we at here?
Right there, I think. I'll go one more. Yeah, right there. Full CIP, no borrowing. So this is getting the projects done that was on that last schedule, showing you where you would end up, you know, financial forecasts. And then the next slide would show you where you are with respect to key financial metrics that are part of your financial policies that you adopted a few years ago. The orange highlights are where you're not in compliance with the policy. However, that policy also lays out that you have, that the city manager would lay out a plan to ultimately get you within policy within, you know, a certain amount of time. And this, I think, is consistent with that. It involves a 35% rate adjustment July 1st, and then CPI type of adjustments thereafter. Okay? So that shows you, you know, one-time adjustment, no borrowing.
Andy, one question.
Sure.
You said 35%.
Yes.
Keith, are we going to get a copy of all this here?
Yeah, I just talked to Liz. I didn't realize it wasn't in the packet, so we'll send off a copy of this.
All right. Thanks, Keith.
Yeah, that's a full, you know, again, the full CIP, no borrowing, that's going off your existing rates, and that's, if you're going to pay for these things with cash, you're going to end up having to see significant rate adjustments. The next slide, please. This would be what happens with full CIP, 5% annual rate adjustments through fiscal 2025, and a 3.5% adjustment for the next three years after that. And this involves some borrowing, about $3.5 million over, you know, the next five years. And then the next slide would, again, highlight where your key metrics are with the beginning fund balance and so forth. Again, it's at the end of the fiscal year, beginning of the next year, that you're not in compliance, but you're put back into compliance with the borrowings. And then, you know, at each scenario or in each situation that that occurs, your debt coverage ratio, down at the bottom, presently is at 1.44. That would, I think, get to a low of 1.38, and then would increase to above 1.5 going forward. So it's well above the 1 and 1/4 minimum type number. Okay, next slide. The CPI, or the CIP that you'd be able to do with using only a 2% CPI incremental rate increase annually would be significantly reduced. You'd have enough money to do one filter, sand filter project. You wouldn't have the money for the others. You wouldn't have the money for the million-dollar clear water tank, and you would not have the money for a sustainable period of time, you know, for additional capital outlay out in year six through 10. The next slide with metrics. This is showing the fund balance, I should, you know, say, going through, and with the $1 million debt proceeds to complete the sand filter in year, the next fiscal year. Next one, please. Then you see, there's a situation here where you're going to end up not meeting ending fund balance requirements, but over time, that will ultimately resolve itself as well. And you do, for the most part, meet debt coverage ratio requirements with the exception of year three, year, what, fiscal 2021. So the 2% scenario, again, where you've been status quo-wise, isn't really going to address the issues that you have, but this is showing you, you know, and it is a policy choice. If you wanted to go there, this is what you would be able to do with those dollars. Next slide, please. So in order to, you know, maintain the, you know, the current level of service and maintain your sand filters, you know, again, setting those range of possibilities, you're looking at a 35% increase with no borrowing. You'd be looking at approximately $3.5 million in two different offerings over the next four years, and that would necessitate incremental rates of approximately 5% per year for the next seven years, and then 3.5% thereafter. That 5% includes the 2% CPI or inflation type of adjustment. So the incremental amount over and above the CPI would be roughly 3%. As far as a comprehensive rate study, you know, certainly may be desirable as relates to what you have right now and the things that are there and what we know, you know, the rate components would be, I think, the limiting thing that you'd want to look at in terms of, you know, any type of rate analysis, and that's looking at, are you being equitable within your rate structure? The revenue requirements, I think, you know, are set here until you have a master plan update that might identify some things that, you know, go beyond what Lance and his staff have identified, you know, to date. And that's, like I say, a little bit more, you know, quite a bit more comprehensive and should be done in conjunction with that study. A couple of other metrics for you, you may recall about three years ago, you know, when we first started and went through the budgeting process in 2016. You're, if you want to do the lights at this point, would probably be a good time. The city's residential water rates for an average customer, you know, using 8 CCF, 800 cubic feet of water, were roughly 20% below the average of Oregon municipalities. With this type of rate increase, just using simple math, you would be approximately 21% greater than you are today, which would be, get you fairly close to what the average utility would be paying. And once that incremental rate type of stuff increased, you know, assuming there's nothing, you know, real surprising in the results of your master plan, you would be seeing, again, a more consistent CPI type of adjustment as opposed to, you know, these types of adjustments needed to address some things that weren't addressed previously. And then last, you know, item to, you know, make you aware of would be, Ray Bartlett was a financial consultant for the city years ago, and with the last master plan update, what they recommended at that time were rate increases of several years of 10% type of adjustments, and this was all right before the Great Recession occurred in 2008 and '09. Those rate adjustments from 2009 through 2016 did not happen. So there were no rate adjustments for, you know, quite a period of time. And ultimately, what we've, you know, done here until we, you know, learn, you know, get better information is at least, you know, have you do the CPI type rate adjustments so that you're not losing further ground. And then ultimately, you know, things like this, you know, do end up being identified as you're going through, you know, updates of things and systems monitoring and so forth to ultimately, you know, get things in better position than you are presently. So with that, you know, be glad to address any questions you have.
Will you be available for more questions after we've had time to review these documents independently of this?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, you know, your consultant, I'm able to come, you know, at any council meeting that you ask me to be at.
Do we have any contingency fund balance anywhere?
It's really built in within these funds, counselor, you know, within the water fund itself, and, you know, this isn't an SDC-related type projects. We can't, you know, pull those dollars in to cover the maintenance.
Thank you, Andy.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So you're talking, so, and maybe you answered this. I feel like I might have caught it. So the rate increases that you're asking, or that you're saying that we should do, those will only cover the projects that you're talking about, because we have other, like, water issues that are going to, that are going on too. So are we going to need to increase even further for, for those projects as well?
Well, the schedule of projects, counselor, that this financial forecast addresses are those that are identified in the five-year capital improvement plan that Lance and his staff put together that are part of the budget document. If there's projects that go beyond that schedule that are maintenance-oriented, yeah, they, and those are things that the council wants to address, there would be a need for additional, you know, revenue beyond what the, you know, these forecasts utilize. If the projects are expansion-type projects that are SDC-oriented, and there's sufficient SDC monies available, those can be, you know, put towards that use. If those dollars aren't, you know, sufficient, you know, then you get into a timing issue. Do you want to move forward? And then that, you know, involves additional debt, which may involve some additional, you know, rate adjustments. One thing that you'll notice on this one, you know, this was first prepared, Lance did not have the. you'll notice on this one, you know, this was first prepared, Lance did not have the latest information on filter.
Filter bed number three.
Three. And so his slide's updated to include moving that up a few years. I had it out, I think, in fiscal '24, '25.
Yeah.
And he's showing it a little earlier.
Okay.
There is some additional debt capacity that exists within the forecast that are within the margin of error a little bit. So, you know, there may be some slight tweaking of that, but it's in that 5% plus or minus range, you know, over the next, you know, certainly, you know, five or six, seven years.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just to clarify, what you're saying is, based on the new information about bed three, the forecast is actually a little more dire than you initially presented to us? Am I ascertaining that correctly?
It's gonna require spending some more dollars sooner than, you know, say, moving it up two, three years. There is the ability to issue additional debt within the existing rate structure that I've shown you. And it would just be spent a little earlier. Okay?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Go ahead. Lance, at what point was the sand at 24 inches?
That's tough to determine, Brian. There's a lot I'd like to talk about, but what I will say is, we're at 12 inches on pond number one. We take about an inch a year out.
Okay.
You can do your math. 12 years ago for pond number one. Pond number two, we're at 18 inches or less, six years ago.
And so at what point does someone say, "Hey, we're getting low"?
When they clean it, and our operation and maintenance manual states at 24 inches, we're supposed to be replacing sand.
Okay.
What I will say is, that should be collected or checked every time we clean it.
Mm-hmm.
It had not been. I did not realize that. I have since crafted a standard operating procedure for that to happen. And I guess it could be my fault. I assumed my plant manager was doing that when they're cleaning it. I, I can't, I'm not a micromanager. So I would have assumed that that was taking place since it's in the operation and maintenance manual. It wasn't. I don't wanna throw anybody the bus. Had we found it 12 years ago, we would have had to come up with money. Had we found it six years ago, we would have had to come up with money. The issue that I see, and I wanna correct Andy on one thing, we weren't looking at the master plan when Ray Bartlett predicted, said 10%. What he was giving that 10% a year for, for eight years straight, 10% increase, was for the improvements we had done in 2010. So we went, we spent all this money, and we didn't have any money to pay for. So all we've been doing is taking money, robbing the cradle, or robbing Peter to play ball. And we have not saved any money for sand. We have no money for it. So that's kinda why we're in the predicament we are. We haven't raised rates until last year to help pay for that kind of stuff. And fortunately, we found it, and...
My recollection of each time that topic was approached, the community was not in favor of rate increases.
I can understand that.
Yeah, there won't be now.
There won't be now, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Keith, when it was brought to you that this was unplanned, can you please explain to me how that was explained to you, and, and what you feel your role as a city manager is, and your, and the role of a director of public works is to keep track of stuff like this, especially when they come on to a new job?
Well, one of the, one of the challenges, and we're gonna go into council goals, that we had talked about a lot, was, was asset management. And so we've been working hard. Andy's been part of this. Lance has been part of this, and other staff, in terms of understanding what these are, so that we're prepared for them, and that we have the resources in place to do it. I mean, ultimately, to answer your question, responsibility is, is mine. So, you know, it's, it's our job to stay out in front of this, and to be aware, and to anticipate, and to do the due diligence we need to do, so we're not caught in this kind of, of situation. We've been working on that, but this is, is something that was not a known issue, and was not something that came out as we started to do our forecasts, or our long-term forecasts, and our asset management planning that we've been, been working on and trying to expand. And even more so, we're working on five-year plans. You know, I think the goal should be a 10-year, or 15, or even a 20-year plan, because some of these things like this can be 12, 15, or 20 years out. So to have the money in place to do that. We found the Ray Bartlett issue, but, you know, again, that's a situation that, letters from 2008, and there was no increases. And that's kinda what, what put us in this position a little bit, too, which is, at some point, these, these costs are gonna be there, and we're gonna have to bear them. And we definitely don't like, this has been a pretty quick process and turnaround, as we've tried to get the information and discover the, the price. You know, initially, when I heard sand, I wasn't too concerned until we started, you know, looking about some of the changes. And then, you know, as the cost estimates came, and as Andy put this together, and as we got this in front of you, it's been a pretty quick turnaround in terms of trying to digest all of this and work through this. So I apologize for not having the memo. I'll make sure that gets out. I'll make sure it's in our next council packet as we bring this forward, as we see what the, what the bids are. But this is an example of why we need to be better as a staff in terms of, of understanding what our assets are, and what those long-term costs.
Mr. Mayor, that's a follow-up question. Have you received a copy of a completed new policy on, on this? Or when, when is the deadline that you've set to get that?
Lance is working on it. I know we have our new, our new water person here, and Lance is talking about that right now, in terms of this. Go ahead, Lance.
We have a draft right now, counselor. I instructed one of my engineers to craft that several weeks ago. It's on my desk. I've reviewed it. I haven't brought it to council. I hadn't thought it was a need. It's a standard operating procedure that'll be looked at from here on out.
I didn't ask for it to be brought to the council.
I, I understand that. I'm just letting you know that.
Thanks.
Other questions? Thank you, Lance.
I don't feel like my question was answered, Mr. Mayor.
It was.
I don't feel like it was answered from Keith of when he is going to get that.
Oh, I could present, counselor, I could present that to him tomorrow. If, I didn't realize that's what you were looking for.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
It's, there's a draft. I can present that to him tomorrow.
Thanks.
Okay. Are we okay there? Sort of. Okay. Anything else on this water thing? Yeah. Okay, let's go to city council goals. City management team staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I think I'll, I'll handle this, and I'll let staff jump in. On February 2nd, the management team and the governing body attended an all-day retreat with an objective of establishing, setting council goals for the next, the next few years. The retreat was facilitated by SSW Consulting, which was Sarah Singer-Wilson. After the February 2nd meeting, staff got together with Sarah. She came to the office on February 26th, and we met to try to hammer down and to finalize what we proposed, the goals based off of that retreat. In your packet is Sarah's draft program. We received this last week. And it's the summary with the set goals. The goals were broken into eight categories. And of those eight categories, they were broken into short-term, which are one- and two-year goals, midterm, three- to four-year goals, and long-term, five-year goals. I do wanna touch on quickly what the, the key components were, which was improve communication and outreach, support economic development, provide diverse housing options for the community, improve and expand city facilities, plan for a safe community, develop a capital improvement plan, expand the city's water supply, and enhance community livability. So in closing the packet is the, the draft proposal of the goals and proposed timeframes. Upon adoption, SSW Consulting will produce a graphic summary guide to the retreat, and will finalize this draft summary. So these goals are important goals because they will set what the priorities of staff and what the budgetary goals we're gonna bring forward to the budget committee are. So with that, myself and staff would be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Keith, I'm wondering where the goal for improved city processes that included perception of city staff and council, improved customer service, update codes or criteria on how we approve what comes into our city for development, streamline business development processes, process improvement, making it easy to understand, tracking issues, documentation, which holds everybody accountable. Where did that go?
I don't recall during the conversation specifically that. What was, what we did here was to try to, to put it into a process that was, this is actually pretty aggressive, that was something that could be accomplished in the timeframe, and that would meet budgetary constraints. So this was what had sort of worked out in that process, in terms of trying to, to work some of that information down, and to make it a, a final document.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a picture of that exact goal after it had been sorted out.
I think, I mean, I do think the materials and the goals are part of the, of the process and are shared in, in here, which was the executive summary that Sarah has provided, has broken down the different environmental scans, the accomplishments, the trends, the drivers, the issues. So the materials that we, we worked from to bring down these goals were all kind of included in that sort of process. I don't know if that picture, but I do know that she did provide pictures of, of materials that we had crafted and drafted during that, that process.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I mean, I have photos of the board where we sorted them out during the goal planning. And I think with some of the things that have been brought up recently, the processes is very important as a goal, to make sure that this, that we're holding the city accountable. That's part of why we were elected, is to hold the city accountable and represent the residents. The other part is to communicate to the residents what's going on. I don't feel like the things that I have had questions about and asked for have been fulfilled. And I feel that's, that's a really important goal to have in there. And it's something that we talked about, and it is missing. I combed through this. That's just one note. That's an entire goal missing.
We could definitely ask Sarah, I know she came down, but, I mean, part of the understanding with this was that we would not be able to reach everything that was included in, in the environmental scan. These are your goals, so you can definitely, as a council, change them as, as you wish. But with the amount of information that was there, that was one of the challenges that we faced as a staff, was that we would not be able to incorporate reasonably with the expectation of being able to complete this. And honestly, even what we have here is, is pretty aggressive. And so, you know, the idea was to make sure that we, we can meet that. But these are your goals, so you can definitely make adjustments as, as you think are fit.
Counselor, would you print those up, what you read, print that up in, in a, an email, maybe, to all of us?
I'll send the photos to Keith.
Would you please?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anything else, sir? Counselor? No?
I was just gonna say, I, I guess we're gonna have to make a motion on this to go ahead and, and table it till we've fully completed the council goals in accordance with some of the photos that Paige has identified, of notes that we apparently didn't make it into here. So...
These would be the council goals that we've worked out with, with Sarah Singer-Wilson. We could see if she could come down. Again, we might need to pay more, more money, but this, this is what came out of, of that process. And yes, there was an understanding that we would not be able to cover every goal.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Counselor?
Keith, when you guys decided to take an entire goal out, did you think that perhaps it was important to notify the council that you were taking an entire goal out?
Counselor Hook, I have to be honest here. I don't think that question is, is, is coming off as you intended. There wasn't a nefarious deed here, or any council objective, or staff objective to, to disallow or ignore a goal of the council. There was a lot of information that was there. And this was the, the process of trying to put definitive goals with, with terms in them. If you're unhappy that, that one of them is that you think is critical, we'd be happy to, to place it or consider it. If need be, we could see if Sarah can came down, because she was the one that was facilitating, and based off her experience. This is what we, we went with. But there was no nefarious intent, or, or even objective of not having something that's in there. I guess also, yeah, I have to say, I, this has been a constant issue for me since I've been here, and it's been something we've been working on since I've been here. So we have other processes we're trying to improve, and it's been a, a constant thing over, over the last, over the last five years. So I understand your concern. It's something we're still working on. The financial policies that Andy talked about were part of this whole process as well. So...
Okay. Anything else on that?
Get following.
Do we need a motion, or would you like a table?
Well, for a moment, do, Keith?
Yeah.
Do we have to call Sarah down here and pay money that apparently we definitely do not have to go ahead and write some things on this, you know, document that Paige has already identified in her photo? Is that something we could just?
I mean, I think what, what you, I mean, what can happen is, we can take photos of, of what the process was as, as Sarah worked through this. There was an understanding that, that because of the nature of setting eight goals with the number of goals that we did, you know, what was reasonably accomplished, you know, that we could reasonably accomplish over the, the timeframe. And in terms of some of those goals, I guess, as I'm thinking about this here on the fly, you know, part of this issue is, is honestly, the expectation that you should have on me as the city manager is the processes and procedures that are in place, and to consistently improve those. And if I'm not actively doing that, or I'm not available to do that, then, then, then that would be a conversation to have in terms of, of moving forward.
Understood.
Okay. So should we just let this one sit for a while?
Yep.
All right. So, let's go on. No staff commission reports of the Oregon Waters, Water Board, Water Union, whatever. We got another best service water award, three years in a row. That's on there. Keith, anything else this evening?
You know, at this point, I, I do wanna call out the staff and, and the people that make this possible. This really is a, an award for all of us, and it really is quite an accomplishment. And I know now our staff looks forward to going to these meetings with the anticipation that we'll win, and have been looking at other, other ways to apply, see if we can win additionally, additional awards. So congratulations to the staff who's made this happen, and for the, for everybody in the city, the governing body as well, for making this possible.
Okay. I don't have anything else this evening. Business from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I would like to have a lot more detail on the meetings that happened about the village parking area. I want a lot more detail of what was discussed, how it was discussed, why it was ruled out. That's what I would like to see. I don't feel like, with as many people that came in that were upset, that we did our due diligence in reporting back to the community how that was, process looked.
Would the rest of the council like that? We've spent probably 10 hours at this point of staff hours. I'm going over this issue. I guess, counselor, what I would ask is, what is it you would like from us? What is the end goal that we're trying to reach? Because I'm really struggling understanding what that is at this point. You keep saying you're not happy with analysis, but we've gone through that analysis. I honestly don't know at this point what more to give. I'm sincerely asking, what is the solution you're looking for so we can provide that?
I'm looking for a narrative of what you guys discussed in your meetings, so that we can have that on the record for people that are asking us questions of why there wasn't additional parking put in, or, well, did they consider this? Did they consider that? I want details of what you guys considered, and why it was ruled out.
The staff member that we've provided was detailed, the, the things that we've talked about. I know, counselor, we spent probably an hour and a half on this issue, the two of us, talking about this. The staff, we spent, the three of us spent probably two total hours going over this, plus the, the time of drafting the, the report. So we can keep doing... So, we can keep doing this, but I guess my, my, I need to know what, what the end game is. What is it other than saying, did we do the analysis? We provided that information the best we could. I could have staff literally spend all the time you want drafting reports. I'm going to say I don't think that's the best use of our time.
I said it earlier, and maybe that's a superficial look at this thing. I hope not, but this thing, you know, it goes back, it goes back so far. It's a, it's a problem that defies a solution. Unless you were to go down there, I think, and it's just my take on this, to go down in that neighborhood and create five or six or eight, whatever the number is, wider streets, you can't safely get more parking in there. You can't get what you want without altering the, the, the structure of that area. It was a mistake 20-plus years ago. The thing was planned as a, um, as a mobile home park or, yeah, I think so, a mobile home park. The structure, the streets and roll-up curbs and whatnot were put in and then the builder decided, or the developer changed his mind and wanted to put houses in there. But all that infrastructure was there already, already too narrow and it, it's a mess and it always will be. And I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how anybody can fix it. I, I think our, our folks have sincerely tried, um, I, I think, as I said earlier, I think it's a problem that defies a solution and that may not be adequate, but that's, that's just my take on it. Other thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
My recollection of the way we left at last was, can you please just look at it one more time? I think that's what they did.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, he's asking you for specifics on how you wanted to do it and you're asking for narrative and notes and all this. And meanwhile, I don't see anybody else coming here complaining. No one's reached out to me via some email complaining. The same person that implemented the thing to begin with was the guy that got a ticket because he asked for the police department to give him a ticket. He demanded it four times before he got the citation. So, I think in my book, we're done.
I think the problem with that is that no, we were kind of beating a dead horse at the moment, if you will, like we're, they have looked at solutions and we're, we're not liking the outcome, but that, it is what it is. So, it's, it's an unfortunate situation is what we're, we're coming up against, as I feel like. And I, I appreciate, um, Counselor Hook, that you want, you want us to look at it from all angles, but I don't, I don't feel like they, the staff hasn't done that just because they haven't given us details of their meetings. I've, I mean, I, I don't know, in, in my mind, thinking about it, like what else they could do, um, and to Dan's point that he mentioned earlier, is we could offer more parking spaces, but that would create, they would have to walk farther from their house. So, I don't, I don't know what there, what else there is for them to do at this point.
Probably not tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Who do, if they're, when the signs go up, if this comes up, who do I direct them to, to get information as to what you guys did for, uh, the analysis and, and the details that went into that and why things were ruled out? If someone asks me that, because I won't have those answers for them.
Well, there's, there's, there's two forms of, of, there's two conversations we had. The first conversation, and we actually went down on site, I went down with the police chief on site to drive around, but the first conversation was, where do we put the no parking signs? And, and the determination was essentially to try to minimize the number of houses that would be impacted. So, essentially, we created an island and Rich, you could name the streets down there, but I don't remember exactly. We went down and drove onto the site to look and see, um, where that was and we looked at it from the terms of, uh, impact on parking and, and the island essentially, um, provided the least amount of impact in terms of available parking down there. So, that was the first set of analysis that we did as a staff and that's what led to, um, Lance beginning the process of, of doing that. The second analysis we did was, um, going back to the request, which was, um, talking about it during our staff meetings and then having it a sit-down meeting with Dan, Lance, myself and, um, Rich and bringing up the GIS and talking about what were the perceived problems that we could identify. And of those perceived problems, we could identify what potential solutions could be used. So, you know, the first issue that Dan talked about was the issue of, I want to be able to park in front of my house. Well, unfortunately for half the people, less than half the people, um, there was no solution to that. It would be parking across the street. We looked at the number of parking spaces per available. And then we looked at the other things that were all considered and had discussions. The area is surrounded by essentially a wetlands, um, which makes it challenging. And the other challenging thing, and we've had this conversation as well, there's no place to put a parking lot or parking space that would in any way be close to people's homes. And, and we were looking at the GIS map. People would have to walk 1,500 to 2,000 feet. We looked at the parking ride and the feasibility of that, but you're going across a wetlands, you're going to a, a state of Oregon, which doesn't allow overnight parking, um, and, and the cost of that would have been, um, pretty astronomical. And the other concern was, um, there would not be, it would not be easy for people to, to walk to their cars from houses, um, even houses that were the closest to that. So, we looked at, at all of those possibilities to say, okay, where could we potentially find parking that would be viable and equitable to, to everyone? And that's what created, um, the, the letter that we produced, see.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, yeah.
I just want to say, um, prior to the hearing, I was able to reach out to Keith and I believe Dan Fleishman and explore some of these different solutions and we kind of went over them during the hearing. I know, uh, they were, I think they may have been covered in a little bit greater detail in the email I received back from Keith. Uh, perhaps I could supply you with that if that might help. In addition, I'd say, I feel like there's a lot more critical issues at this point that staff needs to address outside of this that are going to impact a lot more residents of this town and I feel like we need to move on to those and start getting at those. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, let's leave this, look at future agenda items and get out of here. It's 10:00.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, on a different subject.
Absolutely, go ahead.
We've had a lot of different conversations tonight and I don't want to lose sight or minimize the best surface water award. And, and I can't tell you, I've lived in Los Angeles, I've lived in Battle Creek, Michigan, and Kalamazoo, where drinking the water has a, has a thickness to it and I'm not even joking. Every time I'd had to drink the water there, I felt like I was catching cancer. You've got situations like Flint where the water is undrinkable and I can't tell you what an absolute blessing it is. And when I was looking for a place to live here in Oregon, I was told that the water here was great. And being able to drink out of that tap and actually have it taste good and have it taste clean is an amazing thing and, and I want to thank the good work for the folks that, that have put, um, the effort into making that water what it is. Cause it is, it is something that makes people want to move here.
Yes. I agree. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Yes, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else tonight? Future agenda items. Child abuse prevention proclamation, ordinance number 1019, council rules, Regis Street Award, water treatment sand filter replacement award of bid. Is there anything else tonight? Then we are adjourned. Good night, thank you.